Good morning. I call to order the meeting of the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate your interest in Alabama Community College System and welcome. A great deal of work and preparation has gone into the development of the documentation for this meeting. I want to thank the Chancellor and his staff and all of our college presidents and your staffs for their work in preparation for this meeting. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to our core mission of education, workforce development, and academic transfer. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Pastor Frank Bowling of Eastmont Baptist Church. Frank Bowling came to Eastmont as the senior pastor in December of 2020. He has more than 20 years of ministerial experience, including 14 years as a senior pastor at a sister church in Tennessee. Frank is a native of Tennessee. He received his undergraduate degree from Middle Tennessee State University and has completed his Master of Divinity with Biblical Languages from Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary. He's currently pursuing his Doctorate of Ministry with a concentration in evangelism and missions from Southern Baptist Theological Seminary. Frank and his wife Gina have three children, Emma, Eliza, and Joseph. Frank loves the Tennessee Volunteers and enjoys playing golf whenever the opportunity arrives. Pastor Bowling, we welcome you here today. Thank you.
I don't know that I've ever been booed when I was about to pray, but that'll work. Feels like I'm back home. I don't know. This past Sunday, we had our graduate recognition Sunday for our high school students, and we have three of those students who will be attending one of our Alabama Community College Colleges from Trenton State and then Southern Union as well. We have other students that have gone on before there, and so I appreciate the work you guys do and the rest of you folks do. You're impacting the state of Alabama in a significant manner, and I'm thankful for your work. And so with that, if you don't mind, I'll leave you a moment of prayer. Father, I thank you for your grace toward us. Thank you for the hope that we have opportunity to share through the person and work of Jesus Christ, our King. I thank you for the work of this board and these college, these community colleges and technical schools. Father, I pray that as they equip young men and women for essential skills needed in our workforce, that you would use them to shape these young men and women into responsible citizens capable of thinking critically and applying skill in much-needed areas. God, I pray that you'd grant them wisdom and courage as this board makes decisions moving forward, as we think about how we respond to societal changes, cultural movements, and even political maneuvering. And God, I pray for wisdom on high for the men and women who impact the system, who chart direction and a course. We pray for Chairman Roan and his family as they grieve the loss of his mother, and I pray, God, that your grace would guard his heart and his mind and that you would give him the capacity there to even love and minister to his family well. Father, may your spirit guide in decisions of wisdom for human flourishing here as these men and women gather to discuss, to work toward the good of the state of Alabama and her citizens. God, may you bless these proceedings in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Go Vols.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Bowling. Please stamp our pledge of allegiance to our flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, would you please call the row for us?
Mr. Kevin Shale.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray.
Present.
Mr. Goodrich Rogers.
Present.
Mr. Lon Houston.
Present.
Mr. Lloyd Lynn Roan. Mr. Tim McHark.
Present.
Mr. Rick Lycett.
Present.
Dr. G. Ed Richardson.
Present.
Governor Kay Higbee.
Thank you. We'll now have approval of our agenda. Our agenda was distributed in advance to our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Motion second.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signature with your voice voter, hand raised. We'll now have approval of the minutes of April. We just did the minutes. Did we approve the agenda? Did I skip that? Okay. All right. All right, we'll now have new business, item 6A, election of board officers for nominations for chairman and a vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we do need to approve the minutes last.
You did the agenda. I did the agenda and we skipped the minutes. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the amendments of April 10th, '24.
Okay. Now second. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Now we have item 6A. I'm starting off real well here this one. Election of board officers. We have our nominations for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Goodrich Rogers, chairman.
Nomination and second. Any other nominations? Motion nominations be closed. So move.
Second.
All in favor, I'm thinking about voice voter raising your hand. Motion passes. Now we have a nomination for vice chairman.
I move that we nominate Valerie, Mr. Valerie Gray for vice chair.
Second.
Second. Any other nominations? Motion nominations be closed.
Move.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Motion passes. Okay, now, now that was just to close the nomination, so now we need to elect Valerie Gray. Is there a motion? All right, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I've been accused of not being the best on Robert's List of Orders, so hopefully we got that correctly, totally correct. All right. Madam Secretary, we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. William Tunnel with the AEA. Michael Dresch for the first seat.
Mr. Tunnel?
Yes, sir. Tenille, but I've answered the tunnel for 49 long years.
Tenille?
Yes. If you ever see it written, you'll know why. I must, I do feel obligated to clear the room with Roll Tide. Pastor did a great job. I want to be brief. I just wanted to bring a word of appreciation to the board members, Mr. Baker. Well, congratulations, Chairman Rogers, vice chair. That's great. I want to say a special thank you to a few staff members as well as to board members that I had the pleasure of speaking with. I think it was last week about the policy that's on the agenda for today. Through those conversations and the staff was so gracious to entertain a plethora of questions and concerns from me on behalf of members of AEA that work in the colleges, and the product of that policy language now is quite good, and so we are really appreciative of the change that was made to the policy. It resolved all of our concerns. I want to say thank you to David and Boone, Sarah as well, and Shane even got in on the mix, and to all of you for the time that you gave me on the phone to have that conversation. You were so gracious to listen and pay attention to our concerns, and so I do want to say on behalf of AEA and our members, thank you for what you have done with that policy, and we appreciate that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, we don't have any college spotlight. We'll now move into executive legal and public information, section nine, action items B1. First on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question, because we jumped ahead a little bit and recognized the visitors from Truist Bank.
Yes, yes.
And let's call on David to come up and introduce.
From Truist Bank, David, would you come forward and introduce your visitors?
Chairman Rogers, Chancellor Baker, it's my honor and privilege to introduce the board to a couple new friends, as I like to call them, certainly from Truist Bank, and we had a press release this morning with Truist and the Pathfinder Success Foundation and then adult education providers throughout the state of Alabama with, at Trenton State, and certainly Kimba was there and headed that off. Wonderful morning to really showcase what we're doing through adult ed in partnership with the foundation and Truist Bank. So it's certainly my honor right now to introduce you to a couple individuals from Truist, and we'll let them say just a few words. Alexander Bumpers, he's the market president of the Montgomery-Truist area here in Montgomery, Alabama, and then Heidi Schoonover, she's the CER manager and director of strategic initiatives and partnerships through Truist Bank. So come up.
Thank you, David. Well, good morning, everyone. It's great to be with you all, and I brought my friend with me here today, Heidi Schoonover, who was on the ground and really knows the specifics behind the statewide partnership. As David said, my name is Alex Bumpers. I am the market president here in Montgomery, Alabama, representing Truist, and I just want to let everyone know that Truist, our purpose is to inspire and build better lives in communities, and I'm really proud of the bank. I know all of us, all the companies we represent have a purpose, but oftentimes I don't necessarily see companies living in that purpose and walking in that purpose, and I'm really proud of the bank and the statewide partnership to the tune of $250,000 partnership with Paths for Success to invest in workforce development. I think if you are going to partner with the community, one of the greatest ways to do that is to invest in workforce development. So I just again wanted to say thank you all for allowing us to say a few words about the partnership. Very proud to lift up the community in concert with you all, and I want to bring Heidi up to talk about some of the specifics with regards to that statewide partnership. statewide partnership. So thank you.
Good morning. It's great to be back in Alabama again, but I wanted to just sort of highlight the importance of this partnership. So for those that don't know, I lead a team that works on developing and managing high impact initiatives that are innovative but also scalable and sustainable. And we were out doing listening sessions across the eighteen states that we operate in and we asked partners from across the Truist footprint to submit their ideas for innovative solutions to their state's most critical need. And when we were out in Alabama, one of, one of many needs that we heard, but one that kept resonating was the need for workforce development and specifically the need to help remove barriers for individuals to get their GED or high school equivalency or to get upskilled or re-skilled into jobs that pay a livable wage, but also jobs that pay a livable wage but have upward mobility with them. So they're high demand jobs. So Paths for Success Foundation submitted and was ultimately the organization that we selected. So they were one of seventeen organizations selected to be a part of the Truist Catalyst, Community Catalyst Initiative. It's a three-year partnership and the critical piece of this is we're not just writing a check and saying, "Good luck, Godspeed, and let us know how it goes," but we're on a quarterly basis connecting with them to talk about how things are going, where we need to lean in more, bring additional Truist resources, bring other partners to the table. And I just want to say how excited I am that ACCS is, is one of the partners that's going to be helping us to really drive significant impact in, in Alabama for the workforce development. So thank you.
Any questions?
Great.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your partnership and for your leadership. We, we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Now we'll move to item 9A1, first item on the agenda. Lurleen Wallace Community College approval to enter into a lease agreement with the city of Laverne. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize the president of Lurleen B. Wallace Community College to enter into a lease agreement with the city of Laverne. The term of the lease, lease is for ten years. This is for a $1 annual lease payment. Do we have a motion?
So move.
So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, voice vote or raise your hand? Motion passes. Next is item 9A2. This is also Lurleen B. Wallace Community College approval for the naming of the administration building on the Andalusia campus. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize the president of Lurleen B. Wallace Community College to name the administration building on the Andalusia campus as the Dixon Administration Building and to add appropriate signage. This is for a $500,000 pledge from the Solon and Martha Dixon Foundation. Do we have a motion?
So move.
So move, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by voice vote or raising your hand? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, item 9A3. This is recommendation regarding the adoption of revised policy 500.01, use of college facilities as shown. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees adopt the revised policy 500.01, use of college facilities. It is further recommended the policy take effect immediately. Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman. So move.
Second. All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion passes. Next is item 9A4. Recommendation regarding the adoption of revised policy 502.01 leases as shown. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees adopt policy 502.01 leases. It is further recommended the policy take effect immediately. Do we have a motion pass?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand or voice vote? Motion passes. Next is item 9A5. Recommendation regarding the adoption of revised policy 610.01 leases with pay as shown. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees adopt the revised policy 610.01 leases with pay. It is further recommended the policy take effect immediately. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion passes. Next, we have a revision in our, our meeting schedule. The change was for the October meeting location, which will be here in Montgomery. Do we have a motion to approve the changed meeting schedule for this year?
So move.
So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion passes. You can raise your left or right hand. All right. Next, we have item 10A1. Action item, Lurleen B. Wallace Community College approval of special building fee increase. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Lurleen B. Wallace Community College to increase the special building fee from $10 to $15 per credit hour. This fee will take effect fall semester of 2024. Do we have a motion?
So move.
So move, have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion passes. Okay, now we have item 10A2, which is a resolution approving and authorizing chancellor to complete, complete negotiations and execute final construction contracts and purchases for the rural health care projects. I'm going to read the first paragraph of this resolution. You've all seen it. Whereas the board trustees of the Alabama Community College System was established by Act Number 2015-125, the Act of the Alabama Legislature, and approved as law by the governor of Alabama on May 5th, 2015. And whereas pursuant to the Act, the Alabama Community College System, the ACCS was created and is now governed by the board trustees, the board created the Act. And we're going to skip reading the rest of that. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So move.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Resolution passes. Thank you. Item 10A3. John C. Calhoun Community College, the adoption of resolution approving a bond issue. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board trustees adopt a resolution providing for the construction, renovating and equipping of facilities of the John C. Calhoun Community College for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the par amount of approximately $30 million for securing the payment of the principal and of interest of such bonds and for payment of cost of issuing bonds. Fiscal considerations, approximately $30 million revenue bonds for no more than thirty years with an annual debt service expense of approximately $1,948,000. Is there a motion pass?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A4 is also a bond issue. Lurleen B. Wallace Community College adoption of resolution approving a bond issue. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board trustees adopt a resolution providing for the construction, renovating and equipping of facilities on the Lurleen B. Wallace Community College for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the par amount of approximately $5 million for securing the payment of the principal of and interest on such bonds and for payment of cost of issuing bonds. Fiscal consideration is approximately $5 million for a maximum of a thirty-year bond with annual debt service of approximately $330,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A5, another bond issuance. Shelton State Community College adoption of resolution approving bond issue. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees adopt a resolution providing, one, for the construction, renovating and equipping of facilities on the Shelton State Community College; two, for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the par amount of approximately $18 million; three, for securing the payment of the principal of and interest of such bonds and for payment of cost of issuing bonds. The fiscal consideration is approximately $18 million for a maximum of a thirty-year bond with annual debt service of approximately $1,156,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? The motion carries. Item 10A6. Council, Council Trenton State Community College adoption of resolution approving a bond issue. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board trustees adopt a resolution providing, one, for the construction, renovating and equipping of facilities on the H Council Trenton State Community College; two, for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the par amount of approximately $5,725,000; three, for securing the payment of the principal of and interest on such bonds; and four, for payment of cost of issuing the bonds. Fiscal consideration, approximately $5,725,000 for a maximum of a thirty-year bond with annual debt service of approximately $370,000. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A7 is Northwest Shores Community College purchase of a mobile simulation vehicle. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize the president of Northwest Shores Community College to expend $644,215 for the purchase of a mobile simulation vehicle. This will be used for the Centers for Rural Health Care Opportunities Grant. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Here's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gray. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand or a voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A8, Enterprise State Community College Workforce Training Center. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Enterprise State Community College to proceed with project named Enterprise Campus Workforce Skills Training Center. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than July 30th, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Here's a motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand or a voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A9 is Bishop State Community College Main Campus Gymnasium renovation. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Bishop State Community College to proceed with the demolition bid for the project named Main Campus Gymnasium renovation. The project scope will modernize and renovate the athletic training room, public restrooms, and other public space circulation areas of the building. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than July 30th, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Second. Second. All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A10 is Coastal Alabama Community College, the Bruton Campus multi-building rer roofing and repair. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College proceeding with phase one of the project named Bruton Campus multi-building and rer roofing and repair. The scope of phase one is for the rer roofing of seven buildings where damage was caused by strong winds in 2023. Construction contracts for phase one shall be executed no later than August 1st, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion? So move. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A11 is Reed State Technical College Building 600 Cosmetology renovation. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Reed State Technical College to proceed with the named building 600 Cosmetology renovation. The renovation includes improvements to the existing building interior and exterior. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than July 30th, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion carries. Item 10A12 is Shelton State Community College, the Fred Campus Building renovations. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Shelton State Community College to proceed with the roofing work on, for the project named Fred Campus Building renovations. The scope of work includes rer roofing or roofing retrofits for building 100 and 400. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than August 1st, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? The motion carries. Okay, item 10A13, Shelton State Community College Martin Campus Mechanical Equipment Replacement. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Shelton State Community College to proceed with the project named Martin Campus Mechanical Equipment Replacement. The project scope includes replacement of chiller one, chiller three, hot water pumps, chill water pumps, and heat exchanger in the central plant. Construction contracts for the replacement shall be executed no later than July 30th, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote? Motion carries. All right, now personnel? Ms. Finkelstein?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, morning.
I'm Charlene Finkelstein with Human Resources and I'm here to introduce our latest new hires to the system office. If you'll recall at our last meeting, I introduced the members of our new safety and security department. And at that time, there was one member of that group that wasn't able to attend, but we do have him here today, so I'll start with him, Mr. Chris Barnett. Chris is a background investigator. He has over twenty years of law enforcement experience, including twenty years as an officer with the Gardendale, Fulton Dale, and Bessemer Police Departments. He served, served several years as detective for the Gardendale Police Department, has numerous certifications covering almost every area of law enforcement, and he is based at Wallace State in Hansville. Thank you, Chris. Matthew McFaul? Matthew is our new regional chief information officer. He has twenty years of experience in information technology and has served as a network administrator, IT support analyst, and IT director at Jacksonville State University. He most recently served as chief information officer at Wallace State Community College in Hansville. He has a bachelor's degree in management and a master's degree in manufacturing systems technology from Jacksonville State University and is currently working on a doctorate in emergency management specializing in cybersecurity. He is based at Central Alabama Community College. Thank you, Matthew. Neil Johnson? Neil is our new systems administrator. He has over thirty years of experience in information technology. He has served as a programmer, network administrator, and a webmaster, and most recently served as network applications engineer and senior systems administrator for Jacksonville State University. He has a bachelor's degree in computer information systems from Jacksonville State University, and he knows just about everything there is to know in the IT world. And he is based here at our system office. Thank you, Neil. Dr. Sharon Alley. Dr. Alley is our new senior project coordinator, of course. Dr. Alley is our new senior project coordinator of course development for our Innovation Center. She has over seventeen years of experience in the field of dentistry. She served as an instructor and most recently program director for the dental assisting and dental hygiene programs at Wallace State Community College in Hansville. She has a bachelor's degree in human environmental science at the University of Alabama and a master of education and leadership from Athens State University. She also has a doctor of dental medicine from the University of Alabama, and she is based at our Innovation Center indicator. Thank you. John Mullins. John is also a senior project coordinator of course development for the Innovation Center. He comes to us from Drake State Community and Technical College, where he served as the Director of Workforce Development. Prior to that, he was Dean of Workforce Development and Continuing Education at Southwest Virginia Community College. He served in the business world for fourteen years as an assistant store manager for Lowe's Home Improvement, and he has a bachelor's in business management from Bluefield University and a master's in executive leadership from Liberty University. And John is based at our Innovation Center indicator. Thank you. And last but not least, Amber Morgan. Amber is a senior curriculum coordinator for the Innovation Center. She comes to us with twenty-five years of military service in the U.S. Air Force and Alabama Air National Guard, where she served as a knowledge operations manager and intelligence analyst. She also served eighteen years as a Spanish instructor for the K-12 system and two Florida universities. She most recently served as instructional designer for Northwest Shoals Community College. She has a bachelor's degree in sociology from the University of North Alabama and a master's in Spanish education from Auburn University, and she is based at our Innovation Center indicator. So please help me welcome all these wonderful new people to our staff.
Thank you. Now we have item twelve, Chancellor's report.
Boom. Come speculate where we're headed with the legislature.
Well, good morning, Chairman Rogers and trustees. This is a great week, and the reason why it's a great week is because it is the final week of the twenty twenty-four legislative session. The legislature is meeting today and possibly tomorrow, depending on what happens today, but they're, they're expected to wrap up their business either today or tomorrow and finalize and finish up the legislative session. Since our last update to you several months ago, Chancellor Baker and myself and others have been working very hard with the legislature to ensure a favorable outcome for the ACCS in the education budget and related appropriations bills, and I'm pleased to report to you that I believe we've been successful in those efforts. Still a little work left to do, but we're in the final stages of that process. Yesterday evening, a conference committee made up of three representatives and three senators met to resolve differences that were in the House passed and the Senate passed versions of the budget and the appropriations bills, and they adopted a final report of those bills that would be the final version that will go to the governor. These bills are the FY twenty-five education budget, the FY twenty-four supplemental appropriations bill, and the advancement and technology fund bill. The final version of these bills maintains all of the funding advancements for ACCS that was in the Senate passed version of the bill and adds an additional two million dollars on top of that for ACCS capital projects. All told, the ACCS would receive around two hundred and forty-five million dollars in new ongoing and one-time funding through this year's budget package. The House and the Senate will vote to approve the conference committee's recommendations later today, and so this is, again, another very successful budget package for the ACCS. The funding percentages, that's how we kind of compare who got what, so the funding percentages for ACCS in this year's appropriations bills continue to outpace our historical levels as compared to other educational entities, and the percentage of funds that ACCS received in available one-time supplemental appropriations actually exceeded the percentage that we got last year, and you know how good last year's bills were. So, all in all, again, we came out very, very positive. I want to personally thank our presidents who assisted during the legislative session. We called on them on several occasions during the session to call their local legislators on the budget and other topics, and they always came through and gave us good information that helped us advocate further over at the State House. And I want to thank each of you trustees for your support and engagement during the legislative process, especially on the budget. You guys always called and asked questions, and we appreciate your support and engagement. So, at this point, happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Boon, great work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Chairman, working during the legislative session is super important, but our folks are doing a great job across the field throughout the state on a daily basis, and that really makes what happens during the legislative session successful because it wouldn't be if we were not busy about the business of operating education programs across the state, and I'm so proud of what everybody's doing. Neil Scott, it, okay, uh, as always, I'm going to ask Neil to give us an update, and it's kind of a measure of what some folks are thinking.
Well, good morning. Thank you so much, congratulations, Chairman Rogers and Vice Chair Gray. Our thoughts and prayers are certainly with Mr. Roan and his family right now. We do have fantastic news to continue to report as it relates to enrollment. So, I'll start with a summer enrollment update because that is where, that is what is immediately in front of us. Summer is typically a smaller term for, for most of our colleges. We do have some of our colleges that have substantial numbers of transient students, those students who are enrolled most likely at a four-year college, and when they've returned home for the summer, they've chosen to take a course or two at their, at their local community or technical college. But thirty-five thousand four hundred and eight students have applied for summer classes for the, for this school year. That is twenty-four hundred and seventy-three applications ahead of where we were on this date in twenty twenty-three, and that, that equates to seven point five one percent ahead. So forty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight students have registered for summer twenty twenty-four. In the past, I may have neglected to point this out, if you're wondering why registered numbers are higher than application numbers, it's because students who are already, uh, students at our community college do, do not necessarily need to reapply for a course. So if you're seeing a disparity in that number, and you ever have a question about that, let me know, but that's why, so we have almost forty-two thousand students registered for summer classes. That's over twenty-one hundred students ahead of where we were in twenty twenty-three. That's five point four five percent of where we were in summer twenty-three, and credit hour production is up at an almost equivalent rate of five point zero eight year-to-date. Those are fantastic numbers to report. Summer is a, uh, summer's a wonderful term for us to be able to pick up, pick up some additional students who, who may not have enrolled with us in the fall and spring because they are attending other colleges. There are also, there are also students across the state who have just graduated high school, and rather than waiting until the fall term, they want to go ahead and get, get a jumpstart on their education and begin in the summer, so we certainly welcome that, and that's reflected here as well. So I'll jump into a fall enrollment update. For the fall of twenty-four, fifty-eight thousand three hundred students have applied for that term. That's an increase of six thousand and twenty-seven applications over where we were this date last year for fall twenty-three, and that's eleven point five three percent ahead. So that's a very, very encouraging number to be, to be up eleven and a half percent. We have a handful of our colleges who are not registering students for the fall term yet, so it's really difficult to come up with a meaningful comparative registration report, but I will, I will show you again what our significant application increases are in. Those are in first-time freshmen at ten point zero eight percent, transfer students, almost seven percent, dual enrollment, twenty-one point two two percent, and then returning and readmitted students of eleven percent. I believe by the June board meeting, we will have, all of our colleges will be registering students for the fall, so I should be able to give an actual registration update at the June meeting. On the non-credit workforce, uh, non-credit enrollment update, workforce, adult education, this is the same slide I showed you at our, at our last meeting. The last meeting ended up being, uh, being, uh, the final update for what they consider, I guess, their spring term or the equivalent to their spring term, January first to April thirtieth. Through, through our non-credit programs, through Adult Ed and Workforce, they had an unduplicated headcount, that is, unique students of eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven. Those students took a to, they registered for, uh, for over fifteen thousand program, fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty pro, uh, programs throughout, or courses throughout that, that non-credit offering. I did not, they provided an update for the, uh, for the summer, which for them, they've already begun to, begun to measure, starting on May first, but those numbers were pretty limited right now, but I will, I will share with you, I didn't break it down by, by program, but grand total of unique students who are already, already registered for adult education and workforce programs for this summer is two hundred and thirty-one, and they are registered for a collective seven hundred and eighty-nine programs through Adult Ed and Workforce. So this is really encouraging, and we, we talk a lot about our four-credit programs, but I think it's really important that we don't neglect to see these, these as students. A student is a student, and we want to make sure that we are serving them in whatever capacity that we can and that we are, that we're helping them improve their lives. I'll be happy to take any questions related to enrollment, and I appreciate being given the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Neil. Any questions?
Great work, great work by the presidents and your staff, too. We appreciate that.
Well, absolutely, and, and to Chancellor Baker's point just a moment ago, the good work that is happening throughout the year that, that really resonates with the legislature, a lot of that is, shows up in enrollment in our colleges and their, their student services divisions, and even, even their instructional divisions do a lot of work to make sure that this happens, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, appreciate it. Do we have any committee reports? No committee reports, all right. Okay, the date and location of our next meeting, we'll have a work session here in this room following this meeting at eleven AM, and in our next board trustees meeting, we'll be at Gasson State Community College on June twelfth, and we are, Dr. Murray, President Murray, we're looking forward to being on your campus then. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you. You want to start back in five minutes?
Yeah.
Thank you. You want to start back five minutes? We'll now call the work session to order. David?
The first three items on the work session agenda are all mission statements. They are for Trenum State, Southern Union, and Beville State. With regard to Trenum and Beville, it is a request for review and approval of their current mission statement, and for Southern Union, it is a request for review and approval of their revised mission statement. Do we have any questions relating to any of the mission statements? We'll move to the next item, which is Trenum State's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to enter into an agreement with Baptist Health to implement a medical laboratory technology program. Baptist Health will pay for all faculty members and provide both classroom and laboratory space for the program. Tuition for the program will be split 80% to Baptist Health and 20% to Trenum. In 2022, the Board of Trustees authorized the college to offer a medical lab technology program, but the college has since that time been unable to hire a program coordinator. This action item will allow the college to jumpstart its program, uh, and provide its students with, um, the education and laboratory, um, activities that they need to complete this program, and the fact that the hospital is, um, providing the training, uh, it would suggest that this would be a pathway to a job upon completion of this program. There is a definite need for medical lab technologists in the River Region. Does anyone have any questions relating to this item? The next item is Greed State, it is a request that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to continue its special billing fee and to raise that fee from $11 to $15 per credit hour, which if approved would go into effect in the fall 2024 semester. The college is presently in the planning process for the issuance of a revenue bond, uh, in the amount of approximately $7.5 million. Does anyone have any questions relating to this item? The next item is Northwest Shoals' request that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to name the Patriot Park Walking Trail as the TVA Community Credit Union Trail and to add appropriate signage. This naming opportunity would be in exchange for a gift of $25,000, and those funds would be used for the continuing, uh, improvements to Patriot Park. Are there any questions relating to this item? The next item is at Gaston State, it is a request that the Board of Trustees approve the president to adjust the college's naming opportunities by gift level. The college has worked with Bright Dot, a nonprofit fundraising firm, to adjust the naming opportunities to be commensurate with the college's service area. Are there any questions on this item? The next items relate to new programs at Calhoun and Enterprise, and understand that we have presentations from both colleges.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker and, and Board members. I'm Wes Rechtstrahl, Vice President of Academic Affairs from Calhoun Community College. We send you greetings from Dr. Jimmy Hodges, who was not able to be here, and John, John Holly's here with me, I, I think John's coming up in just a second, but, um, we wanted to ask you to, um, consider and, and approve our three new, uh, AAS programs, and certainly we're here to, um, answer any questions, and so, um, particularly, I'm here to speak about the Social Work Technician Program. So let me just give you a quick, quick rundown, I know you have a packet there, but, uh, this is a AAS degree, uh, four semesters long with, uh, 60 credit hours. Uh, we have partnerships that are interested in, in working with us, particularly Huntsville Hospital is, is very supportive of this, as well as Department of DHR, so, um, entertain any questions that you might have about that program. Thank you.
Good morning, and as Mr. Rechtstrahl said, I'm John Holly, I'm Dean for Technologies at Calhoun Community College, and it's my pleasure to come for you today to, uh, request, respectfully request that you consider our application for a new aviation program at Calhoun Community College. Uh, as you know, that we have a lot of growth, and with the prior Field Airport Authority, we were approached a little over a year ago because of a development project that's creating 250 more jobs, uh, for aviation mechanics and technicians, maintenance technicians. We have other, uh, companies located in the area that are doing maintenance, repair, and overhaul, uh, a lot of support. We have put together a good application, I feel like we've done a, a lot of work, legwork, due diligence on it, so at this time, I would like to, uh, answer any questions you may have, see if there's anything we could follow up on. Thank you.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker and Board. My name is Anna Head, I serve as Dean of Instruction at Enterprise State Community College, and on behalf of the college, I'll be presenting our proposal for new programs in both automotive technology and welding. ESCC has experienced success in recent years with the expansions of its career technical programs, including the Afield of Applied Technology. For example, while the college's mechatronics program served 12 students at its inception, it has rapidly grown to serve as many as 90 students in a single semester in the first five years. Building upon this foundation, ESCC seeks to expand its applied technology programs in order to offer local students the opportunity to prepare for high-demand careers. In regard to automotive technology, today we're proposing an associate of applied science in automotive technology with both an embedded certificate and short-term certificate. Although this program will initially be administered at existing facilities to dual-enrollment students, by the second year of implementation, the program will enroll a significant number of additional students on the Enterprise campus. This will be made possible by the completion of a very recently approved on-campus workforce skills training center, which provides a testament to the need for skilled workers in our local community. As explanation, a partnership with the City of Enterprise has helped make plans for this new facility possible, and this commitment demonstrates not only the confidence of the local community and the college, but also the belief by city leaders that training in areas such as automotive technology is necessary to provide residents with employable skills, as well as meet the needs of area business and industry. Graduates may find employment with automotive dealerships, garages, chain store repair shops, machine shops, parts supply companies, or service stations. They may also become independent business owners. In addition, a light cash report indicates that the ESCC service area is a particular hotspot for this kind of job. While the national average for an area this size is 234 employees, there are 280 in the college's region. In addition to automotive technology, today we are also proposing an associate of applied science in welding with an embedded certificate, as well as two short-term certificates, welding technology, and basic SMAW and cutting. Like the proposed automotive program, the welding program would initially be offered to dual-enrollment students at existing sites, but it would expand to the Enterprise campus upon completion of the aforementioned workforce center. This program also provides training and employable skill to local residents while meeting the needs of area business and industry. The purpose of starting a welding program at ESCC is to prepare students for employment in the welding industry. Certified structural welders fabricate- to name the Patriot Park Walking Trail as the TVA Community Credit Union Trail and to add appropriate signage. This naming opportunity would be in exchange for a gift of $25,000, and those funds would be used for the continuing improvements to Patriot Park. Are there any questions relating to this item? The next item is at Gadsden State and is a request that the Board of Trustees approve the President to adjust the college's naming opportunities by gift level. The college has worked with Bright Dot, a nonprofit fundraising firm, to adjust the naming opportunities to be commensurate with the college's service area. Are there any questions on this item? The next items relate to new programs at Calhoun and Enterprise, and understand that we have presentations from both colleges.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker and Board members. I'm Wes Rechtstrahl, Vice Press at Academic Affairs from Calhoun Community College. We send you greetings from Dr. Jimmy Hodges, who was not able to be here. And John Holly's here with me. I think John's coming up in just a second. But we wanted to ask you to consider and approve our three new AAS programs. And certainly, we're here to answer any questions. And so particularly, I'm here to speak about the Social Work Technician Program. So let me just give you a quick rundown. I know you have a packet there, but this is an AAS degree, four semesters long with 60 credit hours. We have partnerships that are interested in working with us, particularly Huntsville Hospital is very supportive of this, as well as Department of DHR. So entertain any questions that you might have about that program.
Thank you.
Good morning. And as Mr. Rechtstrahl said, I'm John Holly. I'm Dean for Technologies at Calhoun Community College. And it's my pleasure to come for you today to request, respectfully request, that you consider our application for a new aviation program at Calhoun Community College. As you know, we have a lot of growth, and with the prior Field Airport Authority, we were approached a little over a year ago because of a development project that's creating 250 more jobs for aviation mechanics and technicians, maintenance technicians. We have other companies located in the area that are doing maintenance, repair, and overhaul. A lot of support. We have put together a good application. I feel like we've done a lot of work, legwork, due diligence on it. So at this time, I would like to answer any questions you may have, see if there is anything we can follow up on. Thank you.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker and Board. My name is Anna Head. I serve as Dean of Instruction at Enterprise State Community College. And on behalf of the college, I'll be presenting our proposal for new programs in both automotive technology and welding. ESCC has experienced success in recent years with the expansions of its career technical programs, including the Afield of Applied Technology. For example, while the college's mechatronics program served 12 students at its inception, it has rapidly grown to serve as many as 90 students in a single semester in the first five years. Building upon this foundation, ESCC seeks to expand its applied technology programs in order to offer local students the opportunity to prepare for high-demand careers. In regard to automotive technology, today we're proposing an associate of applied science and automotive technology with both an embedded certificate and short-term certificate. Although this program will initially be administered at existing facilities to dual-enrollment students, by the second year of implementation, the program will enroll a significant number of additional students on the Enterprise campus. This will be made possible by the completion of a very recently approved on-campus workforce skills training center, which provides a testament to the need for skilled workers in our local community. As explanation, a partnership with the City of Enterprise has helped make plans for this new facility possible, and this commitment demonstrates not only the confidence of the local community and the college, but also the belief by city leaders that training in areas such as automotive technology is necessary to provide residents with employable skills as well as meet the needs of area business and industry. Graduates may find employment with automotive dealerships, garages, chain store repair shops, machine shops, parts supply companies, or service stations. They may also become independent business owners. In addition, a light cast report indicates that the ESCC service area is a particular hotspot for this kind of job. While the national average for an area this size is 234 employees, there are 280 in the college's region. In addition to automotive technology, today we are also proposing an associate of applied science in welding with an embedded certificate, as well as two short-term certificates, welding technology, and basic SMAW and cutting. Like the proposed automotive program, the welding program would initially be offered to dual enrollment students at existing sites, but it would expand to the Enterprise campus upon completion of the aforementioned workforce center. This program also provides training and employable skill to local residents while meeting the needs of area business and industry. The purpose of starting a welding program at ESCC is to prepare students for employment in the welding industry. Certified structural welders, fabricators, and weld technicians are in high demand in Alabama and across the nation, and as we all know, skilled welders command a high wage. Comparable to automotive technology, a light cast report indicates that the ESCC service area is a particular hotspot for this kind of job. The national average for an area this size is 160 employees, while there are 398 in the college's region. Importantly, both automotive technology and welding programs will offer a geographically feasible option for students in the local community who desire training in these applied technologies, yet encounter personal, non-academic barriers to education such as transportation, travel expenses, and childcare. With the ability to provide these proposed programs, ESCC will be able to offer new opportunities to local students while simultaneously adhering to a central tenet of its mission, which is, of course, to always serve its community through education and workforce training. Thank you for your time and consideration, and if you have any questions about our applications, I'll be happy to answer them.
The next item on the agenda is a request for the Board's approval of the allocation of a portion of the 2324 Industry Certification Initiative funds. This particular allocation will be in the amount of $209,000, and will go to Great State Community and Technical College for the purpose of purchasing a semi-truck and trailer to implement a comprehensive driving, CDL driving program in Madison County. The funding will also fund materials, supplies, advertising and promotion, contractual services, and initial repairs and maintenance to the equipment. The award will address a critical workforce development need in Region 1. Does anyone have any questions regarding this allocation? The final two items on the work session agenda are both facilities items, and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Sel.
Thank you, David. Good morning, Board members. We have two projects this morning to present to you. The first one is at Trinum State. This is for a project called the Patterson Campus Building G Reroofing, located on the campus. We've highlighted in your packet and in the slide here the building that is identified for reroofing. Architect involved with this to some degree will be CC and Litchfield. We do expect to take bids that will be received later this month to complete this particular project and the work. Any questions about building G and the renovation of it and the reroofing at Trinum? We did include in your packet other information that you have regarding some of the finances and so forth. The next project that we have takes us over to Northwest Shoals Community College, down to the Phil Campbell Campus. At this particular location, Board members, we have a unique situation where years ago, as one of the first colleges that was built, they took the top of a hill, flattened it, and pushed this material to the southern part of the campus. This has been a unique area that does have some erosion and drainage issues, and so we've been studying this now for a couple of years. And we have two different phases that we're going to break this project down into. One is to go in and to put in some piers and pillars that will go down to what we would refer to as virgin or original soils, and then be able to set up a webbing system to be able to stop the sloughing and the movement of this particular soil and materials that are at this site. Once that's done, we would then move into Phase 2, which is essentially a good civil engineering project, to come in with some heavy materials, grade and excavate the site, and do everything that we can to stop erosion and future deterioration. As we move into this project, we expect at this point to have bids back for us to do Phase 1 later on in June, and as we progress into the summer, Phase 2 will be coming back to you for board action and approval to move into that phase. Board members, we did include there some financial information. This is because of the uniqueness of the project. We still have some degree of uncertainty about hidden conditions, so we do expect the numbers on this could be a little bit larger than what we are expecting and what we've submitted to you in the packet. At this point, we're optimistic that we can contain those costs to what we are forecasting at this point. Any questions about the work at Phil Campbell to stabilize the site and the erosion and drainage issues that we're trying to correct? Board members, thank you for all you do.
That concludes the work session. Gentlemen, let me bring up something.
David, I don't know whether I should call on you or is Neil still here? Maybe not. This is just out of order and out of line and all that, but I know we have moved forward on mental health services. Can you give us a brief? I just think it's important for the board to know that we're in that business or dealing with that issue.
We are in the process of entering into a contract with a company that provides 24/7 mental health counseling to both students, or will to both students and employees throughout the system, including the system office. This is something that we think will provide a great service, particularly to our students in terms of their mental health issues. Certainly, there are stresses for students attending college. Sometimes those stresses can be overwhelming, and this will provide an opportunity for us to provide a service that will assist our students in their academic endeavors. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Anything else? Any of the board members have any? We stand adjourned. Thank you.